Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council Study Session for the afternoon of July the 10th. Councilmember Goforth is unable to attend tonight, and she is excused, and Councilmember Summers is participating via Zoom. Are you with us, Councilmember Summers?
I am. Can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Very good.
The rest of our council are present here in the council chambers. Item one on our agenda for this meeting is to review our agenda for tonight's council meeting. So, council, please take a look at that document. I know we went over this about a week ago, but, Mr. Brady, are there any updates from the staff perspective on anything on tonight's agenda?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Council, any questions regarding anything on tonight's consent agenda?
Good.
Mr. Summers, any questions from you?
No questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
I guess I'll just ask on the central reuse pipeline, sorry. Are we, we had, we approved something last week, so I'm just, can you help me remember what this, what this week's is now?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury. Yes, last week was the first part, which is the 16-inch water line that we have to relocate in advance of the 36-inch, which is the main reclaimed water line that we're putting in. What is on for today is the construction of the first half of the 36-inch pipeline. So, we've kind of broken this down by which crews are working where, so that we can get the contracts in and get them going and getting the crews set up and working, because, as you know, this project's going to take 18 to 24 months, and so, we're going to be out there working with multiple crews. So, we're trying to get ahead by getting the crews started earlier for the sections of pipe that we can get going today.
Okay. I, I know we've met, and you've gone over all of these details with me, but I was just trying to remember, like, which segment is which and which area we were, so this is the same area we're starting with, but just different size pipes.
Yes. So, last week was the 16-inch that we have to relocate. This is the first section of the large 36-inch pipe that has to go into Greenfield. And this will take us from, I'm trying to remember now, Southern and Greenfield, and that area, kind of north of Southern and Greenfield, like Broadway area, and all the way down into the town of Gilbert. So, this is that southern range.
Okay, that goes into Gilbert. I, I just, there was a new cyber article that came out that talked about that we just approved our essential reuse pipeline in eight minutes last week, and I just, I just, in case anyone thinks we don't talk about these, I've had probably 15 or 20 meetings over the last couple of years about this, going through my district, and we've looked at it at length and lots of details, and I know there's just been a ton of work behind it, and so, I, I just want to remind the public that we are doing a lot of discussing about this that they maybe don't see on TV at our council meetings.
That's a good point, Councilmember Spillsbury. We also have three additional contracts that will be coming forward. One will be for the north section of the pipeline itself, and then, we have treatment, work to happen at the treatment plant and a pump station, which will be coming forward. The council report sets forth those additional contracts that'll be coming your way. Overall, it's about $171 million. And then, there'll be another project, which is actually part of the transportation Mesa Moves Bond Election from 2020, where we're repaving two miles of Greenfield Road. But, we wanted to sequence that with the pipe, so we got everything in the ground before we put new asphalt down.
Thank you. I know that there's just an unbelievable amount of scheduling with all of this to make sure you're not ripping up roads over and over again. So, I mean, this is a huge, this is our most expensive project on our books, correct?
Yes.
And it's something we've been looking at for years, and it's super, super needed, right? Like, it's going to just be huge for our city with all the water issues, and so, I just want people to be aware of all that has gone into this. It's really needed.
Mayor, Councilwoman Spillsbury, I think what we also need to keep reminding ourselves, what we're doing here is a big project, but it's providing another source of water for the citizens of Mesa. So, that, you know, of all the projects we can do to provide additional water for our community, and it's high priority, low, even after this huge capital investment, it, over a period of time, it ends up being a very affordable, if you can say that today, in water. As far as relative to water costs, it continues to be one of the most affordable water sources that we'll have. So, this is what we keep reminding everyone, this is a very big project, but it's providing additional source of water to the city at a, at a pretty affordable rate.
Yeah, and I, I know that since I've been sitting in meeting after meeting after meeting, but so, and I know the engineering and water are working very hard and even using an outside company to help with all of that marketing and communication to all the neighborhoods and to all the people who will be affected by this over the next two years, so that they understand the impact that it has on our city. So, I, yeah, I want to thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amen. I mean, it is kind of an eye catcher when you're voting on something that's $48, $46 million, but this is a great story, right? I mean, I, we can't talk about this enough, because this really does lock in a source of water for future generations in Mesa, and this will, believe it or not, cost for itself, or pay for itself very quickly, and then start paying huge dividends for our cities. So, it's a, it's a great story, and we can't talk about it enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any other questions regarding tonight's agenda? All right, if they're hearing none, we'll move on to item 2A of our agenda for this meeting, is a presentation and to discuss the proposed audit plan for the fiscal year Mr. Listiano, good to have you with us.
Hi, Joe Listiano, City Auditor. Wanted to go over our planned, our audit plan for next year. So, I'm going to go over these four areas, the work that we're currently working on, our audits planned for next year, the follow-ups that we have to do for next year, and then the other activities that our office performs. So, first, in progress, we have five audits. The first is the police case management audit, and that was an audit to determine, or is an audit to determine whether effective controls are in place to ensure cases are properly assigned, investigated, and disposed of in accordance with applicable city policies, statutes, and any other requirements. Next is a deal, Department of Innovation and Technology Cybersecurity Audit, and we're determining whether effective controls are in place to ensure that the city would be able to prevent, deter, and respond, and/or respond to any cyber attacks. We're also working on a Department of Innovation and Technology Remote Access Audit, and we're looking at the controls in place to ensure risks related to remote access to the city's network are minimized, and connectivity between the network and remote users is secure. And the last two are citywide audits. The first is a take-home vehicle audit. We're looking at the controls in place to ensure that employee use of city-owned vehicles is done in accordance with any applicable policy, statutes, and other requirements. And then, the last one in progress is the special pay program, which is looking at the controls in place for those special pay programs, and ensuring that they're administered and approved in accordance with applicable policy, statutes, and other requirements. And then, for this year, these are the audits we have planned to work on as well. The first two are carried over from last year. We didn't quite get to these, so we're gonna, those will be first up on our list for this year. The first is a citywide intergovernmental agreements cost recovery audit, and we're going to look at the controls in place for various city intergovernmental agreements to ensure costs are recovered in accordance with any applicable agreements and other policies and statutes and requirements. The human resources hiring and recruitment practices, we want to look at those and make sure they're consistent with industry standards and are sufficient to comply with any applicable policy, statutes, and requirements. The next is the, with financial services and engineering, and it's related to the community facilities districts, and we're looking at the projects that we, that are reimbursed by the districts to ensure they're in compliance with any policy, statutes, and The next is with the engineering department and the ASU building, the post-construction, and looking at the total cost incurred and funding sources used for design, construction, and any related capital improvement for that, for that ASU building. The next audit is with arts and culture, and it's the revenues at the Mesa Arts Center and ensure controls are in place to ensure all due fees and charges are accurately calculated, recorded, and collected. With this, we may also look at the contracts in place with the performers, because sometimes those have specific splitting agreements with revenue, so we want to make sure those, those contracts were also followed as well.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Joe, a question on the engineering ASU facilities. Is that just the city's cost, or ASUs as well, or combined?
I think for the audit, we'll mainly look at the city's cost, but we'll, I think, I, I don't know all the details, because we're not doing the audit yet, but we're going to probably focus on the city costs, but I think as part of that agreement, you know, we paid a certain amount, and ASU paid the rest, right? So, we'll just make sure we didn't exceed our agreed portion of that cost.
Okay.
That, that's the plan.
Yeah, because there was a lot of costs that was incurred by ASU that did not go through our procurement, so we wouldn't even have a view on it.
Well, I know, that's why I'm asking the question as to whether...
The contractor, the DPR contract, I'll call it, that was the larger general contract. So, and I don't remember what the total number ended up being, but it was in excess of what the city's commitment was, and so, we committed to whatever that number was.
63 and 1/2 mil, something like that.
60-something, yeah. Whatever that number was, we agreed to, then everything above, above that was then covered by ASU, and it, and so, that, that number could grow as high as they chose to pay for orders or whatever, and then all the FFNE that came with that also, they paid for also.
Yeah, I was just trying to identify what...
Yeah, I think it's just, I, I, it's kind of a, I'm not sure, the exercise really is more of an exercise of, did we pay more? It should be pretty simple, Joe.
I hope so.
I'm going to do your work, but, I mean, it's like, here's a contract, we paid this much, make sure the city's, what it paid out wasn't any more than what we had agreed to in the IGA.
Right. Thank you.
The next audit is with the city attorney's office, and it's their VOCA program, which is the Victims of Crime Act, Crime Victim Assistance Program, and we're going to look at that was, is administered in accordance with applicable policy statutes and any other requirements, as well as possibly see if there's any efficiencies we can help the department with that program. The next audit is with the city clerk's office, and that's the public records request, and we're going to evaluate the effectiveness of the public records request process administered by the city's, city clerk's office to comply with applicable policy statutes and any other requirements. And for this audit, you know, it's, it says it's the city clerk, but they're, they don't really hold all the responsibility. They kind of help sort of disperse everything. So, other departments will probably be involved, but the city clerk will probably, hopefully help us kind of get to the processes in place, and then, we'll look, look at other departments to make sure they're following those processes. The next audit is with the police department. It's their mental health services team, and we're going to evaluate the internal controls of the team and determine whether they are operating effectively in accordance with any policy, statutes, and other requirements. And then, our last audit is with water resources, and it's their annual ordering and reporting process. We're just going to review that process to ensure compliance with policies and procedures, any other requirements, and look for efficiencies in the process for the department.
Ms. Spillsbury?
On the public records request, is that a matter of if they were done, or how long it took for it to be done? Like, what exactly are you looking for there?
It'll probably be both.
Both?
Because I think certain, I don't know a lot about the process, so, you know, but I think certain, my understanding is certain things have time limits, and so, we'd be making sure that they do that, but also, they weren't ignored, also, right? Because we have a requirement that we provide, you know, information.
And is that including police public record requests, or is that just a whole nother issue?
I think that's a whole other issue, because I think they administer that themselves.
Okay.
Yeah.
I feel like if I ever hear complaints about how long it takes, it's usually police public record requests, not like ones through...
That would be fair, and I think, because of the public records that I think Joe's speaking to are documents of meetings we have, and it would be, we might get requests from citizens, most likely media, and there's a prescribed process that we have to go through reviewing those. Sometimes, there are documents that are not readily available, and maybe a electronic record that then we have to go search for or whatever. On the PD side, a lot of that delays just the volume of requests.
Right.
The, we have to prioritize that request, so we're getting requests from other police agencies or whatever, and getting that information, the redacting that has to take place to make sure we're not sharing personal information. So, there's a, that, it's not as simple for, you know, someone's requesting a document from us, it's just a matter of going, finding that document, and sending it out. Most time, there may be some, I don't know if there's redacting, but not very often, it's just finding the document and reporting it. PD is a lot, lot more involved as far as getting the record, I don't know what the right word, situated so it can be shared, because that's, and I think that, you hear that from insurance companies and others like that, but it's just a matter of trying to protect the personal information that's on there.
And is there a timeframe on these requests for...
There is, both internally and by state law, there's the open records requests.
And are these ones, do you have to pay for these ones too?
The only requests that, most requests are electronic, and we don't have to make copies anymore, but if it's for a commercial request, there's a fee for that.
Okay, if you have to go pull stuff in.
I'm not sure I understand.
I wasn't talking to you. So, okay, that makes sense. I guess I hadn't really ever thought about that, or if it's different with different departments and stuff like that, so, okay.
You know, I'll just add, I do have a running list of potential audits in the PD public records requests down there, but if you look at my planned audits, there's a couple PD audits on here, there's one that we have in progress, there's a follow-up review. I mean, they're, they're our city's biggest department, right? And so, I tend to do a lot of audits there, but I also don't, don't want them to feel like I'm picking on them all the time also, so we do try to...
I'm picked on enough. And then, so that was my next question, was with the police department, what is, what, what are you thinking is in that mental health services team audit?
Well, the, the chief actually asked me to look at it, because he said it's never been looked at, and he just wanted to see how they're operating, if there's efficiencies that we can identify, and then that they're, you know, following. We always kind of look at internal controls. We want to make sure that they're following their internal controls, so that's what we'll focus on. But then, a lot of times when we do these audits, we'll also look at what other, other departments are doing, or, you know, other cities and things like that, and see if there are, you know, ways they can find better, you know, better ways to do.
Okay, because I, I'm a broken record on this, but I would love to see just as much help before incidents happen, instead of just after incidents happen, so, you know, seeing, you know, how other departments or other cities do it, or what the plan is there.
So, we've also discussed that, me and the chief, and I think that's something that we might look at in the future as well, so...
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
And then, for follow-up reviews next year, we have the following, software application management with Innovation and Technology, revenues with the Mesa Tennis and Pickleball Center, two with the police, the badging and security access audit follow-up, and the property and evidence follow-up, and then, last, with transportation, we'll be doing a street maintenance program follow-up. And then, these are the other activities that our department also does every year. We do a citywide cash handling audits, where we go out to the various sites that collect cash and do, do counts, look at their policies and procedures, make sure they're following them. I am requesting that, instead of doing this annually, we move this to every two years now, and the main reason is, since the pandemic, we don't collect as much cash, we've, you know, less people pay with cash now, they've kind of moved to online, or using, you know, we all kind of use a credit card now, so that's kind of us. I think we should still do it, I think we should still be checking on departments, but I think we can just move it to issuing a report every two years, assuming you guys are okay with that. We also do an annual credit card security review, where we look at the policies and procedures in place at the various locations that collect credit cards, and look at their devices and make sure they're following their procedures. This is kind of done in conjunction with Department of Innovation and Technology. There's several requirements that have to be done with the credit card security review. We kind of do the operational side, and they do the back, you know, the IT stuff that I don't really understand, and they, they do their report, and then, you know, we do our report. We also manage the city's fraud and ethics hotline, and we conduct investigations for any allegations or complaints we receive there. We offer consulting to departments if they want assistance with internal controls, or limited reviews, or any other projects, we are glad to help them out. And then, lastly, any unscheduled audits that are requested by city manager's office or city council. That is our...
Great, thank you, Joe. Council, any questions? All right, I know this was also reviewed in, in our Audit and Finance Committee as well, so I think we've, you've gotten, and I know you've asked all of us for feedback on this prior to this meeting, Joe, so thank you, this looks great.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is current events and conferences attended. Council, who would like to share? Yes, Ms. Spillsbury?
So, I'll just bring this up since I'm talking. Last Tuesday was our Mesa City Plaza demo kickoff. That was fun. We, we gathered right before they started tearing the building down, and that was interesting thing for me to see. I've never really watched that happen before, and then I showed up today, and it's gone. So, that was neat, I can't wait to see the new building. Last Saturday was District 2's general plan meeting, and I wanted to thank the people that came and gave us their input, especially the staff that came, since that was more than the constituents that came, but I want to thank all of them that came on a Saturday morning to do that. And then, tonight, no, tomorrow night, sorry, Tuesday night, tomorrow night is our first meeting, public meeting for our Off the Streets program. It's from 6:30 to 7:30 at the Jefferson Rec. Center, so if you're interested in that, the purchase of the hotel for our Off the Streets program, you can find out more information about that program and what the plan is, and we invite people to come to that. And then, next Tuesday, July 18th, since we won't have a meeting before then, is my district's custard with a cop at Andy's Frozen Custard on Southern and Greenfield. That's from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, so like, the hottest part of the day, come grab some custard and sweat with a cop, I mean, talk with a cop, and get some ice cream, maybe even free ice cream, so that's it for me.
Great, thank you. Ms. Duff?
Oh.
It'll come up.
Didn't we already know? Okay. Along the same lines, I attended the Central Police Department's Coffee with a Cop at H-Mart, a little bit out my, outside of my district, but it was a good event, it was a good turnout, and thank you to all those from Central PD and for engaging with the public. It was well-attended. And then, on Saturday as well, they were very, tomorrow's Mesa team was very busy on Saturday, they had you in the morning, and mine was in the evening, and I also want to thank all the residents that attended. It was a pretty good turnout, considering it's a Saturday evening, and I appreciate their inputs and their insights. I think it was really good, and of course, the staff did a great job, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman, Mr. Aridiya? I know, we need to point out that we had a great Celebration of Freedom event on the Fourth last, last week, thanks to everyone on, I thought our new event staff just did a, hit it out of the park. It was such a well-executed and well-planned event, I, I'm surprised, I don't know how we put it on before we had an event staff, so...
Do we have any idea how many people were there? Did we get a number? I couldn't even walk, it was so crowded.
Lots.
Anyone have a number on that? I would love to know. No number. Let's make up something cool.
Candace was there. Candace, you counted everybody there.
It was so crowded, I couldn't believe that many people wanted to be out in the heat.
I've heard, some previous years, we may have estimated something around 40,000.
30 to 40 is usually what they use. And that's only the people that are, not all the neighborhoods and people around the city.
I know that's not a cheap event to put on. I mean, the fireworks and all of the infrastructure and the people that are necessary to put that on, I know it's a sizable investment on the part of the city, but I have to say it's money well-spent, because I, I drove home, actually during the fireworks show, and for blocks and blocks around city, around the Rendezvous Center, there were, all along University, I mean, all along Site 17, all along Mesa Drive, I mean, it wasn't a crowd, it was a crowd behind a crowd behind a crowd, and it just, it just, the thought of all the different families that were coming out and supporting this event and benefiting from it, to me, it was a...
It's the largest, well-attended event we ever do in years.
Yeah, it was a very large crowd, so, job well-done to the staff and everyone who was involved in that.
And I also want to make a comment, they hadn't, there was more misters this year all throughout, because, you know, it was an extremely hot day, and I'm thinking, oh my gosh, but with a little bit of breeze and the extra misters plus, keep on doing that every year, I thought it was much cooler in so many ways, having those extra misters throughout. I think it made a huge difference and made the, the heat tolerable, and I felt very comfortable, as long as the wind would blow, otherwise, it would feel like Florida, but anyway, no, it was very comfortable despite, I think it was the most comfortable sort of life worth that we found out there as far as the heat.
Yeah, I think we're learning how to, we're getting better at this. I mean, I think every year, we learn a few little tricks to make it a little more family-friendly and, and fun.
And then, the mayor and I spoke at the naturalization ceremony prior to the Celebration of Freedom. I strongly suggest for anybody who is interested, it is the most moving patriotic, I don't know how to say it, it just really makes you proud to be an American and appreciate the diversity of people who are coming to our country, we have so much to offer, and it just makes you feel really, I don't know, part of this country, instead of, we always talk about our differences and all this, it's just, and it was so well-done and organized and beautiful, and the music is Mesa City Band, and the speeches, and I was very impressed every year, and was moved this year as well.
I just want to say amen to that. If you haven't had that experience, I really encourage you to do that on, last week, it was 96 people from 36 countries, and all of their, they all brought their families and their children and their grandparents, and it was just really fun to see them, 96 people have, you know, one of the best days of their life and becoming U.S., U.S. citizens. That was a wonderful event. So, again, thanks to everyone who played a role in that happening. Council, anything else we, we need to discuss? Mr. Summers, anything you'd like to share with us?
No, I echo, echo the sentiments on, on the celebration we had on the Fourth. It was very well-done, compliments to, to our staff for putting on an excellent...
All right, thank you. Mr. Brady, what is, I know you've got a few things to share.
Yes, two significant announcements. First, our next council meeting study session will be Thursday, August 17th. A little break there, and see you at August 17th at 7:30 AM. And then, today, I wanted to take the opportunity, first to invite Mary Camilli to come forward. I'm doing this a little early.
But when you've been working for the city for 40 years, we wanted to express our appreciation to Mary. It's not till July 25th, but I think for 40 years, we can round up a little bit. And it's a pleasure, thank you.
Thank you.
Mary, 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 do you mind just sitting down and just share with us two seconds? I mean, this doesn't happen very often. I was asking Mr. Brady how many times he's given out a 40-year certificate, and it's hardly ever happened, so tell us how this happened.
Everybody doesn't work 40 years in their job, Mayor?
No, especially public safety.
Right.
Right.
Right. Well, Mayor and Council, Mr. Brady, first, thank you for the recognition. It's truly been an honor, an honor and a privilege to work here. When you work with great people and you love what you do, it's really not work, it's just the joy of doing the job. And I do want to say that it wasn't horse-drawn buggies when I got hired. I often get that, you own a horse? No, that's not true. But I did ride tailboard, as Councilmember Freeman can attest, riding tailboard, so just to see how we've come so far in the fire service, and with the support of the city management and council, how we've supported all of these things that we're doing today to make the fire service better and better, it makes me proud to be a part of that, and I've had great, great mentors and learned from so many to, to make me really want to stay here and do a good job for the city, and I work with great people. You see four, three of my folks back there, Chief Smith, Chief Johnson, Chief Lachlan, and Chief Hayes... and Chief Hayes, and Tara Cunha are not here, but when you work with wonderful people in the men and women in the, in the fire department, it really make it worthwhile to come to work. And we truly appreciate your support, and I have a great boss, Scott Butler, that makes life wonderful as well. Had to put that in there for Scott, but, yeah. And this is just after the PAF, so.
Tommy is jealous right now.
But it's an honor, and I feel truly blessed to have this opportunity and be put in this position, so thank you so much.
Mary, thank you.
You're welcome.
Chief, before you leave.
Yes.
I remember the day you got hired, because you and Georgia Anne were the first two women firefighters hired by the city back in 83.
Yep.
And there was a lot of angst in the fire service about, as you know, hiring women, and you broke those barriers, you and Georgia Anne, and it was wonderful. And in fact, you had to go to special fire stations that had several dorm rooms, other than the current stations we have today. So you broke a lot of barriers over the years.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I have to say, those that made the tough decisions back then, got us to where we are. If they didn't make those tough decisions, because I got to talk to Chief Oliver and Mr. Bluster when this happened, and all of the concern they had from the community, from the fire department about hiring women, what it was going to be like, and didn't want them to do it. And I have to say, they made a very, they made tough decisions back then. It's kind of where we are today, making tough decisions today for what the future's going to look like. So I had the opportunity to thank Mr. Bluster and Chief Oliver for the...
And Chief Johnson, right.
And Chief Johnson was here, yes, unfortunately, he's no longer here, but thank him too, for making those tough decisions back then to get us to where we are today. So it was a great, great experience. Thank you for bringing that.
We're proud of you. Mary Mary has been the Fire Chief of the Year very recently for the United States, and leads the firefighter chief, chief's association for the United States, so she's not just a celebrity here, she's a big deal everywhere.
Well, and thank you, Mary, thank you for this support, I appreciate that. Thank you so much. You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Counsel. That concludes our agenda for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Ms. Spilsbury. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. We will reconvene upstairs in just a few minutes.